Next item on the agenda for the work session for County. On May 17th is questions in general that council may have for Wayne and for Weston here. Who would like to start where? It's an open floor.
So I'll start. You know, I've heard a lot about the new fleet vehicle upgrade and they're kind of broken up by department. Is there any way to get kind of a master list of what your plan is? You know, the cars that were being replaced, how old they are, all that kind of stuff?
Sure, we can do that, Mark. We have a, we had the, we've got a listing of the entire fleet and we really, what we put forward was a combination of the oldest vehicles in the fleet that we felt should be replaced in concert with direct requests that we'd gotten from department heads that we thought were appropriate, but I'll get that to you.
All right, yeah, I mean, because, you know, again, you know, it's listed under these individual thing. It might be nice to see kind of a more master, like what, you know, how old is the car? You know, because you know, good, that, as you've heard, that was the question we, you know, we probably, you know, ask everybody, like, all right, so what, how old are these cars?
What's going to happen to those vehicles? It's going to be an auction?
We'll auction. Not a whole lot of value there.
Well, let me say this, we hope they auction. When we got a new truck for the airport, they just kept the other truck and headed to the fleet a few years ago. And so I hope that's what happens to them, you know, instead of heading to the fleet.
They'll go.
The Board of Ed does it.
Yeah, initially, it was, we looked at the vehicles by year and potential sale value. In several cases, we're having vehicles, and I know the transmission was brought up previously of one vehicle where it's more expensive to replace the transmission than it is to, than the value of the vehicle.
At some point in time, we'd like to bring forward a fleet management plan because we, the, our plan right now is just keep them until the wheels fall off and they're worthless. We're probably leaving, probably leaving money on the table and incurring costs that could be avoided, but we need more time to go through that plan to see, you know, what is a, what is a more efficient means of managing our fleet.
Are you going to assign a fleet manager?
I think, Larry, if we're going to move, if we're going to move to fleet management, I think we should have a fleet manager and where we would house them.
And who they would.
There are a couple of different places where I could suggest we would put that, but, but right now, we don't manage our fleet. We run the vehicles until literally they won't run any longer. And that's, when we went through the recession and we really had no money, that was understandable, but I think at this point in time, we, we should really give that a lot more thought and determine whether or not there's a better way of doing it.
How many vehicles are in the county fleet right now?
Do you remember the count? Are you talking about all vehicles or?
Yeah. How about cars first?
Or passenger vehicles.
Yeah, passenger vehicles and then?
We've got that, we've got that, we can break that out.
You don't have it on top of your head?
Yeah, I want to say it's over 100.
Okay.
Because there were older than 2000, I believe it was 23, between 2000 and, yeah, the next range that we were looking at of, I think it was 2000 to 2010, we had 63 vehicles and then some newer than that.
And then you have a fleet of dump trucks except?
Heavy equipment.
Work vehicles.
And that excludes the sheriff's vehicles.
Correct.
That's completely segregated.
That'd be nice to know that as well. Does that exclude parks and wrecks? Because they were in here the other day, said they had 30 vehicles, but that may be a total of.
It included, it included.
Parks and wrecks vehicles are included, but they have a, they have a, they have a mixed bag of vehicles.
Yes.
But we can get those, those details for you.
It'd be nice to see.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful for you to see that.
Especially for future plans.
Sure, absolutely.
And take home cars, they're, what, the executive has one? Does the airport have, airport managers still have one? Is that the only two in the county or there are more?
The airport manager was required to have one.
I, I mean.
The airport, yeah, the airport manager, the airport manager and the, and the assistant manager, David Hines, both are taking home their vehicles.
Right.
Other than that, the only take home vehicles are, are the sheriff's deputies.
That, that changed when we got a new airport manager because previously they had removed the car from previous airport manager taking it home.
Yeah, he lived within walking distance of the airport.
Well, and he didn't live that close. He was close. I'm just wondering why it changed when we got a new airport manager.
I don't recall the genesis of it, Joe, to be honest with you.
I guess I'll, if we're going to jump around here a little bit, and the executive's office has one-time expenses, temporary placeholder for soil conservation, and I guess that's the?
That's the 54,000 that we talked about.
Yeah, talked about yesterday.
Yeah.
Should that be in finance? I mean, it seems a lot of it was finance.
It was just a placeholder, Mark. I could have put it anywhere. I decided to put it there because I thought that it would be, it would be more noticeable in the executive budget than it was, than if it was in a larger budget.
Okay.
So the 64,000 you see in the executive's budget on that line, 54 is for the, for the ditch associations and 10 is for the 150-year celebration, the expenses associated with that.
Okay, that was my, that was my next question, the 10.
Yeah.
Okay.
Physically, where will this person work?
Excuse me?
Physically, where will this person work?
Soil conservation.
That's.
It's, it, it's essentially a grant, Joe.
Okay.
And that's the way I'm approaching it, is a grant.
And it was a contractual.
It should be a one-time.
It was a contractual thing too, right? I mean, sounded like outside hire.
They're going to do the hire. We're simply going to provide them with a grant to do the hire.
And the executive's office is purchasing a new car too? That's?
Yeah, what we thought we would do, the elections board uses the executive pool car more than the executive administration uses it. So our, our thought was to move that existing pool car over to, to elections and replace that pool car with an executive pool car. And following discussion that you all had yesterday about your own budget in terms of not wanting an assigned vehicle for, for the council itself, I think having, I think we would have, what, three, three pool cars?
Yeah, three executive pool cars.
Three executive pool cars that, that would be very serviceable cars. I think that makes sense. Having three reliable, modern cars, if you will, or used by the executive department, by department heads. We've got several department heads who, well, no department heads really have assigned cars, but they do travel, so they are provided a pool car when they request it, and we can do the same thing with council.
So that's not just for the executive's office, that's for the executive branch?
Anybody who needs.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep.
And to jump around a little more, we talked about, you know, money for uniforms for solid waste and roads. That's a new initiative this year, correct? They, they currently don't have uniforms?
They, I want to say we had it in last year's budget, about 20, 20 grand in each.
You may have missed that.
Yeah. And the, they.
It was probably in a lineup or it didn't.
So the, the intention with those divisions is they've not had new uniforms in some time. For the roads division, when you have asphalt binder, spray up, it's, it's one, hard to get that off, and two, they're required to have reflective traffic safety colors as well for solid waste.
Is that in clothes or just an additional vest?
They, they could wear an additional vest. We were, we were looking at doing it with the clothes and we were looking at having some sort of laundry service where they get a week's worth of clothes, they drop it off, get a new week's worth of clothes, and then if there's any tears or damage, which public works jobs tend to be fairly dirty at times, they would automatically replace those when they, when they got no longer usable. So it was, it was to improve the image of, of those, those employees.
You know, like when you go and go up to the landfill, like the attendant there when you drop off your trash, he doesn't wear a uniform, does he?
No.
And is he going to be wearing under this new program?
We would, we would look at is for the various convenience centers or transfer stations, we would get a one-time purchase of T-shirt or something for them to wear, or just one shirt. It's the ones that are working, driving trucks every single day or, or out on the roads every single day that would have a, a fresher looking uniform.
So they're currently wearing uniforms now, those guys?
Yes, it's, it's a hodgepodge of, it, it's hard, when you look at one, like, like when you look at a sheriff deputy, you know they're a sheriff deputy. When you look at a public works employee, you don't know if they are Board of Ed, if they are Wreckin' Parks, or what division they are in public works.
Board of Ed wears orange.
Okay. Well, yeah, yeah, so maybe remove the Board of Ed, but the, in terms of looking at those, those employees, they have shirts dating back. If you look at, if you look at their clothing, some of it is significantly aged and doesn't put the best image forward.
The, well, it's Fund 67 again. I know we've been told that 10 times probably. It's, it's in economic development, referencing.
Oh, were you talking about the 18,000, 380?
Wait, we already said we could.
Yes.
What?
You already said we could take that out of the budget.
Yeah, you can take that out. Yeah, that's carryover from last year that we, that, that I thought was going to be active again this year, but I'm told it's not, so we can take that out.
Okay. And the 149, 100 grants operating, is that?
That's for SWEAT.
That's for SWEAT, that's what I thought. Okay, yeah. Question I had in law, in law, we have, let me see here real quick, sorry.
Can you get my lawyer?
It says page 22 on the right-hand side, I'm not quite sure. It's the first, it's on the first page, Wayne, on referencing law. Salaries, benefits, operating expenses.
I'm trying to find.
Where is law, guys?
I'm trying to find my law tab.
11.
Is it 11?
11.
Oh, 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 you're looking at, at what now, John?
Under, under benefits.
Yeah.
I was curious as to how we're, how we're budgeting for hospitalization, unemployment compensation.
The funded retirement pensions, yeah.
Okay, great.
As the OCA.
And the advertising and the postage?
Wrecking parks.
Those are probably legal numbers. I believe those are legal numbers.
Okay.
Budget details in the fours and six.
Right, right. That's where I got messed up. And it may too, yeah. Having, yeah, having to go to three different areas gets weird.
It's our clever way of confusing.
You think it takes that much?
Is there a way we can get a breakdown of what a legal contractual cost have been so far, you know, so far for this fiscal year?
Our billings today?
Yeah, billings, yeah.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
Sure. Yep.
Yeah, it doesn't really, doesn't really specify, it just says, it just says retiree over 65 AARP.
Okay.
So I would have had to ask that question.
Understood. I was thinking for the postage, there should be details there.
Yes, it is, you're right. Yeah, exactly, thanks. One other thing, there was a, in our prior discussion of the library, there's a 24,000, the subject came up, there's a $24,000 to the library that was from Tri-County Council, and it wasn't in the budget.
Tri-County Council for the library?
Yeah, I don't know. I, I made the note here, $24,000 to the library.
Is this when we met with the library?
Yes.
I'll have to backtrack it.
If you could, you know, that would be.
Sure.
Was that in her?
I think it was when.
In her budget?
It was, it was a note that I made during, just during the interview, and I didn't really put any other mention to it except for I had a question mark as to maybe what that entailed and whether or not that should have been noted in the budget. Yeah.
I'll have to, I'll have to backtrack it, find out.
Sure.
Mark? Clean Chesapeake Coalition and Rural Maryland Rural Counties Coalition, I see they're in the budget again this year, is that?
I thought we took them out.
Yeah, I was understanding, at least with Clean Chesapeake, we were removing that.
I thought we took both out. That was the direction that I gave to take both out. Are these still in?
Well, it, I don't know, because the total operating is, was $59,000 and that's, no, no, they appear to be in there, 25 for annual dues, 25 for.
Where are you on that, Mark?
Yeah, what, what tab are you on, Mark?
Six.
Tab six?
Yeah, 65 is, that's 50, yeah, I mean it.
Oh, community promotion?
Yeah, community promotion.
Better known as slush fund.
Yeah, when you add it up, that looks, you know, 59 looks like they're, they're kind of the local dues, Clean Chesapeake dues, Rural Counties dues, and then.
We had given, we had given direction that we didn't feel that continuing membership in either of those was beneficial. I don't want to say beneficial, but worth $50,000.
All right.
So if that's still in, it should be, assuming council agrees, it should be taken out.
Okay. I mean, I assume the local dues, the payment to Mako, Naco, GSC, Chamber, that, that's, yeah, I would assume, okay.
Somewhere in here, I seen a $5,000 donation to the Creek Watchers.
In Public Works.
Yes, Public Works, Joe.
It would be SU is running that program now, so the intention was $5,000 to SU for the creek water, water quality testing. One of the issues that Dallas will now have to address with the Public Works Department is the state stormwater regulations. It's different than our WIP efforts. This is for the urbanized areas of the county, primarily surrounding Salisbury, Fruitland, parts of Delmar, parts of Hebron.
CMS 4 that we spoke of earlier with Jack.
Yeah, the municipal separate storm sewer system permit. With those permits, there's always a water quality testing component, and instead of the county developing our own water quality testing component, we could utilize the Creek Watchers with some modifications, so they're, they're willing to.
So do they have that equipment to do that?
Yeah, well, they, they don't have the equipment, but they send, they send the samples to two separate locations, one locally, one, I know Horn Point Laboratory is currently testing for nitrogen and phosphorus.
Can't we send them to Horn Point?
We, we could, but we would need to pay, you know, we need employees taking the water samples and all of that. They, they handle all of that now, they compile the data. I, I think our, it's a cost savings to the county, having an existing group, keeping them functional and having them do what we need done rather than.
So MDE doesn't do that?
No, oh, no. The bigger cities have to put in real-time monitoring stations in a lot of cases, and they, they come with recurring capital costs of recurring operations.
Has there been any, was there an RFP put out for this to find out what it would cost? I mean, I know we've got water testing facilities in the city, in town here, one on North Division Street, somebody test water?
No, an RFP wasn't, wasn't put out for this. We would, we would need somebody to collect the samples, test everything, compile the data, put out a report, but no, we did, we did not put in RFP.
So how often does this have to be done?
The state will dictate, we haven't received our permit yet, but the state will dictate the sampling.
Frequency.
Yeah, sampling frequency.
So we don't even know how many times we have to do it yet?
Not yet, but the Creek Watchers will adapt to what we need.
So saying they will adapt, if they have to do it five times, they'll do it for 5,000? If they did have to do it 50 times, they're going to do it for 5,000?
It's essentially a grant.
So what happens if they don't get this money from the county?
That's a good question. I know that they're, they're getting money from the city for the same purposes, and they will, they'll have to pursue grants or some other funding, and then we would have to put out an RFP to do our own water quality testing to meet the permit requirements.
I think it's beneficial, the, and, John, your group.
Right.
Is very close to this. I, I view it as, as beneficial to the county.
They, they lost their state funding.
Right.
For this.
That was the genesis of this.
And that's what the trade of this, and the program apparently is, the state felt that it was still worthwhile to do, but wouldn't give them the funding for it, and we could see the results of it.
But it might be a.
Results are important to monitor.
It might be a worthwhile thing, but we don't know what it costs otherwise, we don't know how many times it got, we don't know much about it, other than we've just put $5,000 in the budget to do it, without knowing if it would cost less from somebody else, without knowing how many times we have to test the water. You know, there's really, there's no plan here, plan of action of what really has to be done.
I guess we could have Judith Strickland come in and.
Yeah, we could have Dr. Strickland come and explain.
Well, how would she know if the state hasn't given us our marching orders yet?
She can, she can talk about how volunteers collecting samples is going to be cheaper than county employees collecting samples, having SU grad students run calculations is going to be cheaper than county employees running, it's, it's, there's, from a personnel standpoint, there's definite savings from a water quality testing, we're going to pay the same thing. Maybe SU has a discount because Horn Point is part of the University of Maryland system as well versus if a outside entity tries to go, so.
I think it'd be good for us to see the, I don't know that we need to talk to Mrs. Strickland, but I think it would be good to see the whole plan before we just throw $5,000 out, that, you know.
Do you think it's a good idea for county taxpayers to make a contribution or for us to make the contribution for them? Because I, I've heard that discussion about it being a donation.
Yes, I think from the service they currently provide to the service they will be providing to the county, we thought $5,000 for what we get.
But it's a donation, or titled as a donation, and that's going to leave a lot of questions.
I would, I would suggest to you that monitoring the water quality in the county is probably well worth $5,000.
Maybe that's what should be listed under water quality.
That's what it is.
I see it as a payment for service, really, and I don't think we can find a local lab that's going to be able to do that monitoring and testing for anywhere near $5,000, especially if they see the government behind that check that's going to come through.
But we don't know how many times they've got to monitor. The state's not even told us what we've got to do.
Yeah, and it's likely their testing once a month, as they do, is, is more than what the state will require.
But we don't know.
We don't know yet.
We don't know what the state requires.
Yeah.
We don't, I mean.
When, when will we know?
I'm thinking end of this year, early next year is when they will have the hard talk with us about what's going to go into the permit requirements. We don't know how much street sweeping we need to do either, and, you know, we're, we're planning on, you know, adapting to whatever the, the permit requires. There, there's going to be requirements in turn, what they've done in other cases, and we're hoping to fight it, is a mandatory impervious surface reduction, and that's, that's going to be dealt with.
If the Creek Watchers is the most economical way to go, I, I find that to be great, and you know, let's use them, or let, I don't need, let them do it, but I think first we need to know what we have to do before we dedicate $5,000, given $5,000 to somebody, and I would suggest that we just wait until we had the marching orders from the state before we give the money out of our budget.
It's interesting, Joe, and correct me if I'm wrong, and what Larry said, I think is absolutely right, but if you go through the budget, you can find, I think, five areas that we, the county gives money to that is, is a donation basically from the county, and one of them that comes to highlight, or the five of them are the teen adult cell, which we have no responsibility to, but we make a contribution to them each year. The MAC Center, which we have no obligation to, the Commission on Aging, which we have no obligation to, the Life Crisis Center, and Happy Timbers. And these are all civic or, or community organizations. Now, I know you'll correct me if I'm wrong.
Where would you like me to?
I'm not, I'm not correcting you, but I'm going to have to agree with Matt Holloway, where it's a payment for services that we're making, okay? But we don't know what services we're paying for yet. We, we have no idea. There is no marching orders from the state to tell us how many times we have to test the water. So why don't we wait until we find out before we budget $5,000 to this group? You'd say it's going to be the end of the year, so we'll be working on next year's budget.
The Life Crisis Center is not a donation, that's codified, they receive funds from marriage licenses.
Okay.
So it really isn't a donation in that instance. With regard to the quality of the water, I would offer up that we shouldn't wait for a state mandate to tell us we should be monitoring the quality of the water in the county.
They're already monitoring it, aren't they? The Creek Watchers? They, they monitor water already?
Yeah, but I see that as.
So now we're going to pay them to do it? They've been doing it for nothing, correct?
No, they got $5,000 last year.
It was in our budget last year?
I believe it was, yeah. I believe it was.
I don't, I don't know.
I don't remember.
They didn't get it from us, they, they haven't getting money from the city, and as Councilman Hall mentioned, they were getting state funding, but.
State funding, that's correct, but none from us.
It, it wasn't because of the, the quality results that they were giving, it was the, after funding for so long, they want to invest in new projects and they were hoping they would become sustainable, and as part of the Creek Watchers becoming sustainable, they were looking for additional supporting funds. And our funds would come with strings attached, saying, you need to make sure you meet whatever we need.
That pretty much says it all.
Well, it's not sustain, I mean, you know, I said a whole argument about, you know, services, it's not sustainable if your one government funding gets cut off to just go to another government body, that's not being sustainable, I don't think, but, you know, I mean, P for Service, you know, right in the service of the county, that, I mean, you know, that, that wasn't quite clear from before, and, you know, that does change the tenor a little bit, but.
I could be wrong, I thought we did it last year, but it could have been this year that they lost their state funding. I think it's a valuable service, is my point.
But we don't know what service we're paying for yet, that's what I'm getting at, Wayne. We've never been told, like Weston said, how many times we have to test the water. So do we just give them the 5,000 and?
But again, I'm saying that we shouldn't wait for the state to tell us we have to monitor our water, we should be monitoring our water in any event, and if this is the most effective way of doing it, then I think funding it at a level of $5,000 is well worth it.
Well, we don't know that because we haven't put out an RFP.
That might be the most profound.
That might be the most profound statement of the day, right? Or not?
Not me either.
I was just wondering, Salisbury University has an environmental studies program. Isn't that something that they do?
They don't do the testing, but, yeah, oh, Councilman Hall.
Actually, they're involved in the, in the program itself, and, and they're making a major contribution by having their resources available. And they do all the reporting to the state through...
So, they are doing the lab testing. They're doing the studies themselves.
And getting the results.
That's a good resource, in my opinion.
It is. But, that's just part of it.
You know, the topic came up the other day, and it might have been the Sheriff's Department referencing the task force. There is a, they were looking at five hundred thousand dollars for building, and I believe they said they were refunding that through their, what is it, their...
Asset.
Their funds that they, what is it, when they, when they...
Forfeiture.
Forfeiture, thank you. Forfeitures. And I know that in the CIP, it's a little bit off, but off subject, but since you're here, there's also, you know, in the CIP, six hundred for the Sheriff's Department, et cetera. Is there any way that, that, I'm sure it's been considered, but trying to figure out the bigger picture, instead of looking at, you know, spending the six hundred for the sheriff and letting them go out and spend the five hundred for theirs, is there any way that it could be thought of consolidation in a bigger picture, where, you know, instead of committing the six hundred like we have with the CIP and the sheriff, that we look at something that would encompass the Sheriff's Department, you know, Government Office Building, and any other entities that are out there that are fragmented, that we could maybe consolidate before we go ahead and commit to that money? I know, you know, we probably should have gone through this with the CIP, but in, in retrospect, whether or not there should be a broader study done. I think they did a thirty thousand dollar study about five or six years ago on space in this building.
Yeah.
Ah, yeah. I didn't vote for it.
Right.
So, in other words, before we make that commitment with six hundred for the sheriff, is it, has there been any thought given to consolidation? I guess maybe I'm not looking for an answer, just to keep that in mind, that maybe that's to be considered.
Yeah, I, I, well, yes, there's thought being given to consolidation of county government pulling in...
Physically.
Physically pulling in fragmented departments, to the extent that we can. Had we considered including the public safety bill in the Sheriff's Department in that, we, we did, we did look at one property, actually, two properties where we felt that, that could in fact take place.
Anyway, it doesn't require, you know, it's not really an answer for, I understand. I just thought I'd at least mention that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions?
For the airport, talks about using the two hundred and forty-four thousand of the prior year fund balance to balance the budget. Is that...
It's typical.
Is that fund balance, I guess the airport's not an enterprise fund anymore, so that this is taxpayer dollars, basically, supporting the airport?
Yeah, the, the, well, the, the enterprise, the enterprise fund can probably take care of the, the, the operation of the airport, Mark. It will not take care of the infrastructure improvements that are going to be needed at the airport if we expect to do those infrastructure improvements anytime soon. And, of course, it doesn't address the, the, the expiring ARF, ARF agreement. And I haven't sat down. I put three hundred thousand dollars in the budget from general fund because that, that was, that was our best guess as to what ARF coverage might cost. It may not cost that much, because we haven't yet had the negotiations or discussions with Piedmont. But, but the airport, the, you, you, you can't sustain, in my opinion, you can't sustain the entire airport infrastructure with a single passenger carrier with four flights a day. I mean, if you do that, you know, the airport infrastructure, the physical improvements will continue to deteriorate. So, it's a question of, do we want to, do we want to, and I believe we do, continue to develop the airport campus as an economic asset? Because right now, the only real economic benefit to the airport is derived from the Piedmont operation. There are several other rails that we can put on that track that would generate economic activity. That's going to take general fund investment if we hope to do it on any meaningful timeline. The, 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 the federal, the federal grants, the PSAs, as they're called, that's been programmed out for at least five years. So, we're not going to see any, any money coming for new projects at the airport for another five years. I don't think we can wait five years to really get serious about the airport campus. So, how we structure this, to your point, the airport is receiving general fund support. That can either be structured as a grant, or it can be structured as a loan. And, and, and that's certainly a discussion that we can have. I think the important discussion is, if we're serious about developing that campus, we need to get after it, because we're going to miss the opportunity to do it. And, and, and if you were to say, "Look, I want to structure the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that you've proposed as a loan to be paid back at some point in time in the future," I'm certainly open to doing that. If you want to structure it as a grant, we can structure it as a grant, which is what we did last year.
Wayne, could you go, I'm coming up with two hundred and twenty-three thousand extra, if I'm reading this right, and for wrecking parks. Can you go over some of the aspects of that increase, if I'm reading this right? Am I reading that right? Four million forty-eight thousand, then four million two hundred and seventy-one thousand.
What tab are you on, Joe?
It's sixty. Page seventeen of the Munis report.
Here we go.
Maybe I'm looking at this wrong, but I don't...
I'll try to get back there with you, so...
The second page, seventeen.
Yeah, the second page, yeah. Just before the first page two, or second page two.
Yeah.
It's like a lot of these differences are, are related to OPEB, Wayne.
Yes. That's what I, my...
That's what I was...
Yeah, my, my, and let me, and let me double check it. What you're seeing across a lot of departments are differences this year to last year because of benefits allocations, whether that's the case with Parks and Recreation.
So, to dissect that, we would just basically have to go through the line items, right?
Yeah, but I can get back to you on that, Joe. If you want me to come back with what makes up that difference year-over-year, I'm happy to do it for you.
All right, I appreciate that.
And we're also looking at, because capitals, including the building improvement, there was a hundred and seventy thousand extra in that line from last year.
So, department sixty, right?
Yeah.
I'll detail those differences for you. Yep, happy to do it.
Other questions?
Right, any other questions? Good?
The one thing I want to bring up, and it's on the, it's on the list that I got here, is that the workers' compensation figure for the volunteer fire companies is, is in need of, of adjustment. But, that adjustment is dependent upon what decision is made with regard to the potential for an additional fire company. Because that increase, that, that changes the number of volunteer firemen who are being covered.
Does, does the current...
But, the number that's in the budget right now, and, and it was an internal, it was an internal miscommunication, the number that's in the budget right now is not a sufficient number. I think it's eighty-five thousand. It has to go at least to a hundred and forty-thousand, a hundred and forty-two, I think.
Is that a sufficient figure for...
Just one more fire department? That doesn't include the new fire department.
No, that, yeah, yeah. The thing with workers' comp is that you really don't know what your expense is going to be...
Till after it's over.
Until after it's over. And, and, and what I'm concerned with, Joe, is that we haven't budgeted a sufficient amount in total to cover workers' comp. We could, we could leave it as it is, with the thought that I'll be coming back to you at some point in time in the year, saying, "Hey, I need, I need to transfer from contingency." But, I hate going into the fiscal year knowing, "I got a wobble out here, and I, I'd rather fix it now than to come back later." But, but it's a moving number, depending on what decision is made with regard to the potential for an additional fire station.
But, it's almost double the figure that you mentioned.
Yeah. Yeah.
Where's that five thousand, that eighty-five thousand listed, Wayne?
Was that in HR's budget?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's, that's in workers' comp. That's in workers' comp. Let me get you the details on that, John.
I thought that in this, in this shift that you had made over the last few years, that you were shifting those type of costs over to the actual departments themselves?
And that, and that's where it got, and that's where it wobbled internally.
Okay, okay, gotcha. Because I was, I was looking for it, and I couldn't find it, and...
That's where it wobbled internally. So...
Gotcha.
Let me just come back to you. I'll do that in the next day. And just give you a rundown on what that looks like year-over-year.
Cool.
But, but, but knowing that for the fire companies, that, that allocation is not adequate, I don't want to rely on, well, the other allocations might make up for it. I'd rather just say, "Hey, I think that we're short on the budget, and I, and, and I do. I do think we're short."
How would you suggest that be handled?
We can't, we can't add. Can you add if we ask you to?
Something will be coming back, something, something will be coming back, so that'd be the appropriate time.
I will send something back to you. Once, once I've got a clear, I'll send something to you.
Well, what I mean is that we'll be sending something to you, too.
No, sure.
Once that happens, then I guess that's, that would be the opportunity to throw in there.
I mean, the contingency thing seems to me the simplest. I mean, you know, again, we know what it was...
If you want to...
It was a stake, you know, or, you know, you know, oversight.
If you just want to leave it as is, understanding that we may come back in the fourth quarter of the year and say, "Hey, because they bill us quarterly, so that last quarter billing, I may be short, or we may be short." And I may be coming to you saying, "I need money." The issue is, however, that the contingency may be needed otherwise. So, if we're banking on, "Oh, we'll have plenty of money in contingency in, in the fourth quarter," we've seen this year, that didn't, that didn't necessarily work because of some very unusual circumstances.
Well, we'll, we'll make sure to bump up your contingency as we, as we cut from the budget.
You'll have plenty there, Wayne.
The requirement...
If you get two million dollar contingency, I'm fine.
The requirement for the workers' comp for volunteers is a state code.
Yes.
It's not county, it's state.
That's absolutely right.
It's required.
And it has to do with their roles, and...
Right.
And, and I know that, excuse me, I know that HR has gotten the active roles and done the calculations on what the premium is anticipated being this year. And that's another one of those situations, Larry, where if the roles have changed, that changes the potential for premium.
That's right.
So, so Michelle did come to me to say, "You've got a wobble in the budget that I think you should close," so...
So, how do you know that, for instance, let's say, the new roster that you should be getting, how do you know that they are not with another fire company, which I know some of them were? So, are we paying twice for that roster? Because if somebody's in two departments or three departments in this county?
Oh, I, I need to go through that with Michelle to, to, to be certain that that is not the case. So, I have to walk through those calculations.
And then, there's some of them that are volunteering, and then they're also working full-time for a few of these companies?
Yeah, I, I, I'll come back to you.
Okay. I know it, it's something to anticipate, but it's difficult at times.
No, you're correct on all accounts.
Any other questions?
Can I go back to the law department?
Yes, please.
There is postage budgeted. I thought that that was part of Mr. Wilber's contract.
That's a good question.
I didn't think we had a contract.
Well, his letter of engagement.
Let me go back and look at that where you are. I think it depends on what's being mailed, but let me, I'll check that for you.
Okay. And the unemployment? There's two thousand?
That's an alloc, yeah, that's an allocation I need to look at. That, that may, that may be a wobble in the allocations.
Okay.
I'll check that for you.
Great.
I don't think we have anyone who was with the law department who's continuing to collect unemployment.
I don't think so.
Because I think the one person who did leave is now re-employed. But, I'll check that for you.
Any other questions? Steve, do you have anything?
Do you have anything else, Laura?
No, I'm good.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is that news?
Yes, yes.
Thanks.